A lot of the drainage issues have been studied preliminarily. That is a project which has bounced back and forth in Public Works. We are going to await the new Public Works Director and discuss this with him. And this will be a separate project similar to Royal Oaks that'll include paving improvements and the drainage concerns will be addressed at that time. And then the study areas ten and eleven are the South Cedar, North Cedar, and Montclair areas that have had a number of drainage and flooding concerns associated with forest preserve property for a number of years. Tall Oaks, it's included in our report but not technically included in the study. Tall Oaks has been discussed quite often, it's been studied by another engineering firm. We have a very simple solution that will take care of the ponding in that area. We believe, it'll state in the report that we believe the Public Works crews can do some grading work on the overflow of that basin and solve, essentially solve the problems in Tall Oaks. So as I said, it's not a technical part of the study but it'll be included in the report. And then, of course, I don't have to explain Royal Oaks because Jason got done, that's not part of this project, it's its own separate project. One other thing before Mark starts, he's gonna be throwing out some terms like two-year, ten-year, hundred-year. Those terms are engineering terms that describe intensities of rainfall in an average year, okay? Engineers have to design and study based on average rainfall events over a long period of time. The design parameters are based on rainfall data over the last eighty or ninety years. To give you an idea what two-year and ten-year and hundred-year mean, a two-year event is a fairly common event. We found a lot of the study areas are only, have the capacity of a two-year event, Mark will allude to that. To give you a sense of what that means is, half the time, the storms will inundate and over top and flood. Fifty percent of the storms will do that in a two-year area. A ten-year storm, however, although it doesn't sound like it's a lot more than a two-year, it really will handle ninety percent. Only ten percent of the rain events will be bigger than a ten-year in an average year. A hundred-year has a one percent chance in any one year. So that kinda gives you a little bit of an idea when Mark talks about these things, a sense of the size, the relative size of the rain events and when it floods and when it doesn't. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. The rest of the presentation is gonna give you a little bit of detail about each of the six study areas that we're looking at. And as I go through this, I'm gonna present to you kind of what is our, sort of our first cut at trying to develop some recommended improvements to solve the drainage problems in those areas. By no means are we finished. So I'm gonna present to you potential and conceptual improvements in each study area. But I fully expect that we'll get some feedback from this group, maybe not tonight, maybe in the next couple of weeks. We've got some other ideas, some other alternatives that we wanna run too. And so what I'm gonna present to you tonight isn't our recommendations, that we're not finished yet. But I'm looking for some feedback, I wanted to present to you what we found so far and over the next couple of weeks as we're developing the full range of alternatives, ways that we can improve the drainage in these areas, then we'll finalize the report. But there's certainly an opportunity tonight and in the next couple of weeks to get your feedback. If you think there are areas that are drainage problems within these study areas that we haven't identified, we haven't talked about yet, let me know. Or let staff know and they'll get it to me. If you think there are alternatives, proposed improvements that should be considered, that we haven't talked about tonight, let me know or let staff know. We're looking for feedback and tonight, no decisions need to be made. Just wanna kinda show you where we are right now and talk a little bit about how we intend to get from here to the end. So, Study Area One is shown on the screen. This graphic shows using the different colors, gives you an idea where the high elevations are and the low elevations are in the study area. So the red elevations are the highest and as you move down through the chromatic scale, through the oranges and yellows, greens and blues are getting lower in elevation. So maybe the easiest way to think about it is that the darkest blues, the deepest blues, those are the areas where the water would tend to collect.
Do that, pointer.
Yep.
Show us when you do that.
Yeah.
Can you show us?
Sure.
That we're going along here.
Yep. So, the highest areas, the highest ground elevations in Study Area One are down here in the southwest and drainage generally moves from the southwest to the northeast along this path and also moves from the southwest directly to the east. So there's two outlets from Study Area One. One of them being across Addison Road into the Salt Creek and the other one being across Irving Park, kinda bypassing the Jewel Target Pond and then running along the railroad spur to Salt Creek. The problem areas that we're aware of within Study Area One are shown here with these black dots. So one of them being right here at the intersection of Potter and Prospect, another one along Park Street, and then one here sort of at Miller Road, there's right by the ComEd easement. And then the fourth one being down here Gilbert Street and Forest Preserve Drive. In Study Area One, we've developed so far two alternatives and the major difference between the two alternatives is, let me mention here that north is shown to the right now. So this is Irving Park Road, north is over here. And in Alternate One, the most important feature is that we're showing a large detention basin that would be constructed here in the ComEd right-of-way. And essentially, all of the other improvements where you see black lines, those are where storm sewers are right now, and those would not be adjusted in any way. Where you see a red line, that's where there's an existing storm sewer. But we're proposing that in order to improve drainage in one of these problem areas, the storm sewer sizes would need to be increased in those locations. So, in this area, we're saying that one potential suite of improvements is to construct a large detention basin in this location, to increase storm sewer sizes right here and right here. In general, the existing storm sewer sizes in this area run from twelve inches up to forty-two inches in diameter. Proposed storm sewers would be eighteen inches to fifty-four inches in diameter. And the size of this detention basin, you can see the area that it fills winds up being three point seven acre feet. A little bit further up in the watershed at the Potter and Prospect intersection, in addition to the improvements that were shown on the last slide, there's also a need to increase storm sewer sizes in this location. Existing sewers there are ten inches and they'd be replaced with storm sewers that are eighteen to twenty-four inches in size. Those improvements all fit together as Alternate One. Alternate Two is a case where there is no, there would be no detention basin constructed right here. So the storm sewers that are replaced in the watershed in order to drain these areas where you have water standing on the streets and approaching the low opening elevations in the houses, in order to alleviate those drainage problems, put in large storm sewers, that drains the water. If there isn't a detention basin here to kinda hold the water back, there's a need to make some improvements to the Squaw Creek ditch in this location so that water that's moving through the storm sewer systems and gets to this point can continue to move through the watershed and then up towards, you know, out to Squaw Creek.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
So, the green line is the part of the, that empty lot?
Yes.
Is our responsibility to maintain that?
The city has an easement right now, in this empty lot, there is about a hundred, I think about a hundred feet of enclosed, kinda like a culvert, large-sized culvert. And then it opens up into a ditch in this location. I believe there's a city easement over the ditch?
I don't think there's an easement agreement on that.
Behind apartments on Miller, up to the culvert, there's an easement.
But that's the culvert.
The easement is over the culvert.
Up, over the ditch, up to the culvert, from the back of the apartments to the
Apartments right here.
To the CMP that's in between.
Okay.
Between Dalewood and the apartment.
Okay.
There is an easement to maintain that soil area. But what this'll do is, what this'll do is help the low points.
You might wanna give that mic to the city manager right now for a second. Because we had a discussion about this before.
Mm-hmm.
You remember?
I'd have to go back and check my records. I know we had talked about this before but I can't remember, to tell you the truth.
Okay. Because I remember talking with the lawyer about this too and that's a private lot and it's going right through, so.
And, I mean, in order to do the, to complete the improvements that we talked about in Alternate One, there would need to be, the city would have to obtain rights to work in ComEd's right-of-way to build a detention basin. And so to construct some of these improvements, there would need to be some negotiations with property owners for the city to have the rights to do that.
Because that is fine apart as we speak, so.
I'm sorry, what?
It is fine apart as we speak and I still think it's a big responsibility if there is an easement and it is the city's maintenance, it's the city's responsibility to maintain it.
Mm-hmm.
There's a liability right there.
Mm-hmm.
And it should be addressed pretty quickly if that's the case.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Well, that's okay.
You're talking about where the power lines are from ComEd. What's the record on getting ComEd to donate property like that for retention ponds?
It doesn't happen all the time, but there are cases where they've allowed it. And we've, we tried to reach out to ComEd to ask them that question, you know, are they open to the idea? And so far, we haven't gotten a response. But I think as we're developing several alternatives, I think that that should be in the mix because it is allowed in certain cases. And what we've done when we were laying out a conceptual detention base in that location was to set it where the, obviously it would not be a wet bottom detention basin, I don't believe ComEd would allow that. And we located it so that it would be, I think, a hundred, at least a hundred feet away from the legs of the poles and, you know, so the things that they would be concerned about, we tried to build that into the assumptions. But if this is an option that the city wants to move forward with, certainly, you know, we need to know from ComEd whether, you know, what they'd be asking for from the city in order to be able to construct that in the right way.
I just don't want some ideas that are just, we know aren't gonna fly. It's like we're working with the forest preserve. There's no sense in asking them to put a retention pond in. And I don't know about ComEd, but you say it can happen but not very often.
I didn't say it doesn't happen very often, I said it can happen. And so I, in my opinion, I think that it's, it's a, it at least belongs in the suite of alternatives that we're looking at.
Okay.
I will tell you, dealing with ComEd, years ago when we talked about putting a salt dome over by the firehouse there, okay? And we talked about ComEd giving us the right-of-way that we would put in the road and we would, you're gonna have, again, you're gonna have a hard time of ComEd donating any land, especially with those high-power lines that are there. Those are some major power lines. And ComEd just don't donate land, I'll tell you that right now. So that's, if you're even going to consider ComEd, good luck in that one. Because it ain't happening.
And I wouldn't expect them to donate land. My expectation is that they would be asking for cash from the city for that.
We try that.
Okay.
And they actually told us, no.
If the direction I'm getting is that you want this alternative not to be included in the study, I, we can take it out.
Alderman Shaki, there is a, there is some precedent because I know of an existing detention pond on ComEd property next to the new I task a wastewater treatment plant. So I know they have detention on their property. How it got there, I don't know. But it can happen. We all know how difficult ComEd is to work with and they're gonna, if they agree to it all, there's gonna be a lot of conditions, they'll want their pound of flesh, we'll be signing easement agreements two inches thick. It'll be a long negotiation, but at least we've reached out to them.
Also part of Alternate Two, that's in the same location we looked at before, Potter and Prospect would require some storm sewer improvements. And this existing storm sewers that are ten inches in diameter would be replaced with twenty-four inch diameter storm sewers.
I guess this question, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Your study's here now, we just redid the street over by Potter and Prospect, didn't we?
We did Prospect, we rebranded.
We rebranded. Wouldn't we, wouldn't we even, I mean, that's where the section is, correct? Over that section?
No, this is, this is. I believe this area is Prospect, isn't it Hoover, down that stretch and Potter?
I thought it went all the way to Potter and Prospect though.
Oh, go ahead.
Explain.
Someone say something.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, even if, I mean, in some of these cases where we're
What I'm saying is, in your study, I don't know, how long have you been working on this? I don't know, it's been a while. I take it that when you were doing your studies that you're corresponding with the street projects that we're doing at that time?
Where
You understand my question on that?
I do. And the areas that we're talking about where we may show some storm sewer improvements very well could be areas where streets have recently been reconstructed or improved. And the goal here is to identify potential improvements that are not going to be installed next year or the year after. These are improvements that could be planned for years down the road and maybe the next time that road needs to be improved, maybe these improvements would be included with that. So that certainly, we're gonna recommend improvements in study, in each of these study areas that would improve drainage. The timing of these improvements will be worked out through the capital improvement plan and absolutely would make sense that these would be coordinated with road improvement projects.
I, okay.
Just real, just real quick, you'll notice when we start to get further into these slides, just how burdensome some of these will be financially to do. So it's not like we're gonna go and do this next year. Like Mark said, this is something long-term. I mean, some of these projects cost two, three million dollars each.
I understand that, but if we're digging up Potter and Prospect and we're gonna possibly do this in another three to four years, I mean, you know, Mr. Manager, that we've tore up streets and then five, six years later, we're tearing it up again, so. And normally, we're doing streets, they're supposed to be a twenty-year cycle, so.
This one's not gonna be finished.
Well, that's my point, so. I just don't wanna do a study and not use it as where we're redoing these streets.
Agreed. The recommendations that we put together in this report need to be useful recommendations.
There is a retention pond on the corner of There's a retention pond on the corner of Georgian Station where they put those apartments in back of Georgetown. Isn't that doing the job?
For the apartments. Really has nothing to, that detention basin really doesn't have anything to do with the issues that we're talking about here, strictly for the apartments and all of it.
Almond Coles.
Very small basin.
Almond Coles.
Yeah. I think they, when they built them, I think they had to put that retention pond in, otherwise they wouldn't be able to build them. That's what they had to do. It's strictly for the townhouses there, if I remember right.
The other area that I mentioned as being a problem area within Study Area One is this location, sort of at the southeast corner, which is, this is Gilbert Street and this is Forest Preserve and this is Addison. Again, north is oriented to the right. And what we would recommend in this location would be replacing the existing storm sewers in this location, which are, I believe this is a thirty-six inch storm sewer right now, needs to be replaced with a forty-eight inch storm sewer. And the existing eighteen inch storm sewer here would need to be replaced with a twenty-four inch storm sewer. And that would alleviate the street flooding for the ten-year event. So, those improvements down in this location are included with the improvements at Potter and Prospect and included with the ComEd right-of-way detention. Together, the cost of those improvements would be two point two million dollars. It's important to mention that that doesn't have to be done as one project. These are, all, these improvements work in conjunction with one another, but they could be separated out into separate projects for phasing over time. Alternate Two, which does not have the ComEd detention, but instead relies on improvements, sewer improvements in various locations in the watershed, and then improvements to the Squaw Creek, we're estimating at a cost of two point zero million dollars. These costs include the cost of pipes and they include the cost of construction and design. They do not, however, include the cost of land acquisition, which would be involved in both of the alternates. As part of this project, part of our scope of services was revisiting some of the previous studies that had been done in each of these study areas where the city has had drainage studies done in the past, taking a look at what the recommendations were and at least holding up, holding those up alongside what we're looking at now and seeing, are these still workable solutions? If they are, let's keep those in mind. This is a slide that shows a conceptual drainage plan created for the city in nineteen seventy-three and it shows with the red lines and the blue lines, proposed storm sewers all over the place. But another important aspect of this plan, if you can see them, wherever there's these odd shapes with the red stripes across them, those are intended to be regional detention basins all over the place. This plan was developed in nineteen seventy-three and the forty years since then, a lot of this land has developed. There are in fact detention basins in those locations, but they were constructed, like we just talked about, constructed locally for an individual development and not constructed for a regional benefit, which is what they were conceived as at this time. So this plan, too much time has passed, too much development has passed, so what's recommended in this, on this, you know, what was recommended in nineteen seventy-three is no longer a workable Study Area Five, down in the southeast corner of the city, we've got drainage that flows from the higher lands in the northwest and travels down to the southeast. And this is Route Eighty-Three and this is Oak Meadows.
Turn it.
Yeah. Okay. The outlet for this drainage area is into the Route Eighty-Three right-of-way. And the drainage problems that we're aware of, there's some street flooding in this location and it's been reported to us that there potentially was a problem with the overflow from the detention basin here. And so we've got a dot there in that location. As we modeled this, the, really, in this, this area kinda stands out where the storm sewers throughout most of this subdivision appear to be, you know, have plenty of capacity for the ten-year storm event. And that's really kind of, all these recommendations that we're talking about here are intended to build capacity into the storm sewer system so that the existing storm sewers, which by and large in these study areas, have capacity for the two-year storm or the five-year storm, but not the ten-year storm, except in this area. Most of the storm sewers in this subdivision have capacity for the ten-year storm, with the exception up here in the northeast corner where we have a little bit of street flooding in the model. What we're proposing there is replacing existing six and twelve inch storm sewers with twelve and eighteen inch storm sewers and extending a new twelve inch sewer to an area that, because there's a low-lying area that doesn't have an inlet and doesn't have storm sewer drainage now. We did take a look at this area where basically this detention pond overflows to the south and we have the design plans and saw what the overflow elevation was designed to be. Our surveyors shot that elevation and that elevation is in, maybe a little bit higher than what was designed, but it's still below the streets. So I don't believe that any modification of this overflow is needed. I believe the pond is, it's not, it may be a little bit higher than it was designed to be, but I don't think it's related to the cause of the other drainage problems in this study area. The cost of these improvements would be two hundred and five thousand. Study Area Six is the industrial park and the problem area, well, advance the slides a little bit, the outlet is to the east here, so the low-lying areas are in the blue. And really, there's blue in most of this area that we're studying. Problem areas, we've got extreme flooding at the intersections in these two locations. And then there also is this wetland area when it rises to higher water levels, the overflow is to the east, kinda between some of these buildings here, which creates some problems for those buildings. So what we're proposing in order to solve those drainage solutions, to solve the drainage problems, would be where you see the red storm sewers, increasing the size. Existing storm sewers in this area range from twelve to thirty-six inches, the proposed sewers would be eighteen to forty-eight inches. And there'd be a new storm sewer installed behind the buildings here in order to intercept the overland flow that's coming from the wetland that right now flows between those buildings. Storm sewer and inlets would intercept it and capture that into the storm sewer system. The cost here is sizable, to say the least. Again, these improvements could be broken up into smaller pieces, but the other thing that we're going to look at here is, you know, as we're developing some additional alternatives, there's an existing detention basin that's right here. Not very big detention basin for this sized area and for all of the rooftops and parking lots in that area, that's not a larger detention basin for that. But we're gonna be looking at expanding the detention. The only way you can really go with detention in this area here is to go down. And so we're looking at detention really below the ground elevation and then a pumping station. But when we're talking about storm sewer improvements up to three point two million dollars, underground detention and pumping stations are, should be considered as well. It's not going to, I wouldn't expect it to be significantly cheaper, but I think that there, it's at least gonna be another alternative to, that should be considered. Study Area Eight is, we were looking at Study Area Five, which is, you know, kinda right over in this area, so Study Area Eight is west of there. And this is primarily a problem because there's a lot of drainage that runs off of the forest preserve property and particularly creates problems at Aspen, at the end of Aspen in this location. So there's sheet drainage from the forest preserve property and storm sewers in this area do not have the capacity to collect all that stormwater runoff. The drainage, as it runs, you know, into the subdivision, runs through the streets and then down into this detention base and then out to the east, out towards Route Eighty-Three, similar to the outlet for Area Five. And this is the one problem area that we've identified, but the flooding that you have here really winds up creating street flooding all the way down through these streets. So this is the source of the problem, but there are other problems in the study area.
Where the chairman's gone. Back, back up.
Hold the microphone.
Oh. Did, is all that water causing the flooding from that empty lot over there coming across Wooddale Road?
I'm not sure what, I don't know which empty lot you're talking about.
Help me out, Jeff. You, um, what subdivision just went under, the Park District?
Klein.
Klein.
That's in the
Right.
So Klein is along Wooddale Road? Klein properties are along Wooddale Road?
Yes.
Correct? So over here, Louis, probably up, is it about right up in this area?
I would say so.
I think this is, I think this is Cedar Street here.
So is that, is a lot of this flooding caused from the runoff of that coming across Wooddale Road or you didn't look at that in your study? I, it's just a
Probably, I mean, there may be some runoff from those areas, but I wouldn't identify those, you know, those three properties as being the cause of the problem. I think there's just a much larger area here that all drains, you know, into a subdivision that has an undersized storm sewer system.
Okay.
Yeah. So the alternative that we've looked at so far, and again, we were shooting for what would be probably the most cost-effective what would be probably the most cost-effective. There's been comments already about inability to work with the Forest Preserve District. So, it certainly makes sense that when we develop the full range of alternatives, we're going to come up with some alternatives that don't involve coordination with Forest Preserve District. But this is runoff that's coming from the Forest Preserve's property. And so, what we're looking at in this alternative would be to redirect the storm water kind of along the edge of the subdivision down to a spot here where there's a, Roberts Lane is the end of a cul-de-sac and there's an existing eight-inch storm sewer that if all the storm water was routed down to the south here, that eight-inch storm sewer would have to be increased in size to a 30-inch storm sewer. And the 30, and then the 24-inch storm sewer in this location along Edgewood would be increased in size to a 30-inch. But what you get, if the Forest Preserve District is amenable to working with us on this, you can shorten the distance of storm sewer by bringing the water down here as opposed to increasing the size of storm sewers all the way along all of these streets. So, this would be a five-foot-wide drainage ditch and, as I said, new storm sewers. But we will develop alternatives also that would not involve coordination with Forest Preserve District in case they're not willing to cooperate. The cost of these improvements would be $442,000. Study area 10 is South Cedar Street. There are a couple outlets, basically the, a lot of low-lying area in this spot. And there are relief sewers, existing relief sewers that allow water, when it gets trapped on the streets, to discharge to the Forest Preserve. They're not, they don't have quite the capacity they need to. And so, there are a couple low-lying properties right at the end of South Cedar where the floodwaters rise with street flooding high enough. And you've got a home there in particular where the driveway slopes downhill from the street. And so, you get flooding in the garage of that structure. And that's right near here. And then further to the south, you've got another low-lying area where the storm sewer doesn't even extend that far south. North is oriented to the right here. And so, the, here's the location where you've got a couple relief sewer, existing relief sewers discharging to the Forest Preserve property. And then this is, right now, the storm sewer doesn't extend this far south. So, what we're proposing in this is increasing a couple storm sewer pipes that are six inches in size, replacing those with 15-inch sewers, and then extending a 12-inch sewer down to the south. This is alternate one for study area 10. And this would provide protection for the 10-year storm event, meaning that you would not have any street flooding for the 10-year storm. For the 100-year storm, there would still be street flooding with these pipe sizes. We also ran a, the cost of these improvements would be $140,000. We also ran alternate two, which would be to essentially, you know, work on sewers in the same area.
Can I just ask you a question on South Cedar? Is that the water that's seeping in the street or the water that's seeping in these residents? Or is the water even, and how many residents?
To my knowledge, there are, there are, there's one home in particular that is flooded by water that first ponds in the streets. And then when the water ri, it doesn't have to rise up very high because the driveway's lower than the streets and then it winds up in the house.
But only, only the one house gets water there? The rest of it stays on the street, am I correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
So, alternate two in this area was to look at, okay, what would it take? If the city was interested in providing 100-year protection for that home, how big would the storm sewers have to get? So, whereas we had six-inch storm sewers replaced with 15-inch storm sewers in alternate one, which is alternate to provide 10-year level protection, proposed sewers would have to be up to, you know, 30 inches in size. The other thing that you'll see here is that another relief sewer would have to be added so that you're discharging in a new location to the Forest Preserve property. The cost of these improvements would be $336,000. A couple other alternatives had been...
Did you say you're going to release the water into the Forest Preserve?
It goes there right now. It goes, right now, the water that collects in the streets doesn't, it doesn't work effectively enough because we have structure flooding. But there are existing relief sewers right now that would take some of the water from the streets and discharge it into the Forest Preserve property. So, there's one of those located, it's a 30-inch pipe right here. And then in this spot, there's an existing 22-by-34-inch elliptical pipe. So, both of those are relief sewers that discharge some water in the Forest Preserve property. In order to make this work just with storm sewers and to provide the 100-year level protection, you would need both of those outlets and another one.
On Forest Preserve property?
Discharging to the Forest Preserve property.
You think the Forest Preserve is going to let you do that?
No. Well, there's, well, I'm trying to create some alternatives here. And I wouldn't, I mean, Forest Preserve is not likely to go for increased, increased discharges.
They're not likely to go for anything, any change at all.
Yeah. And so, there are a couple other, oh, there are a couple other alternatives that were recommended by Engineering Resources Associates several years ago. And these are detention alternatives that there isn't a need for us to redo these alternatives. They were modeled several years ago. And these provided a different way to solve those problems in area 10 without increasing the discharge to the Forest Preserve property. So, I think it's, here it's important to mention those. Again, this is that same area on South Cedar Street and north is oriented to the right. A proposed detention basin in this location would essentially capture the runoff that's running downhill before it gets to the problem area. So, you'd be detaining water before it gets to the problem and then releasing it slowly in order to avoid problems. And several years ago, Engineering Resources Associates estimated the cost of these improvements at $397,000. Two thousand nine, so three years ago. They also looked at a variation of that alternative proposing detention in a different location. The problem, the problem area is on this lot and there is at least one vacant lot right next to it. And so, they're showing detention in a different location. And the cost of detention in that location being $471,000. Study area 11 is Montclair. Montclair Street is right here and North Cedar is right here. So, when we were looking at study area 10, it's on South Cedar, so it's just a little bit further south, right here. And the outlets in this area, storm sewers basically carry the storm water to the south. And there are two problem areas that we're looking at. One of them is there's street flooding at the intersection here with North Cedar and Hiawatha. And that street flooding floods the streets and then approaches upon the yards of, I believe, about three properties. And then there's another problem area over here that is rear yard flooding that affects a couple properties. And so, we looked at what it would take, this is one alternative. There will be others that we'll develop. But we looked at what it would take to eliminate the flooding at the intersection of North Cedar and Hiawatha and essentially replacing eight-to-15-inch storm sewers with 12-to-24-inch storm sewers and running those all the way down until you get to the point where there's an existing outlet, again, to the Forest Preserve property. On the other side to Montclair, we're looking at extending a new 12-inch storm sewer from rear yard out to the existing storm sewer along Montclair. And that would effectively drain the depressional, the undrained depressional area in the rear yard there. Cost of these improvements would be of...
Oh, my goodness. Nick?
This is, this is why we can't do meetings like this.
I don't think we, I don't think we're relying on the Wi-Fi connection, but it doesn't seem to be advancing the slides anymore. Is there a Wi-Fi connection between?
What was the total price of this?
Okay, the cost of the improvements along North Cedar Street would be $433,000. And the cost of the improvements, which should cost of the improvements to drain the rear yard along Montclair would be $23,000. So, we really were, we're kind of at the end of the slides anyways. And what would be on the screen now, if it was working, is essentially says, here's what our next steps are. We're looking for feedback and direction from the city, so from you, from city staff. We realize we're not finished yet. I can tell from the comments, there's the recommendations here that involve coordination with Forest Preserve District. If nothing else, maybe those, those improvements identify the cost of potential improvements and maybe just shed some light on some other improvements. So, if we're working, if we're looking at improvements that don't involve the Forest Preserve District, we can find those options. They're probably going to be a little bit more expensive, but we'll develop those so that if there's, if Forest Preserve District historically has not been willing to work with the city on this, then there will be other alternatives presented. Some of the, I mean, just sort of prime the pump, I guess, you know, we're going to be evaluating additional alternatives. I'd like to hear from this group, not just tonight, but over the next couple of weeks as we're putting all alternatives together. If there are certain areas that are problem areas that we didn't talk about, that you're familiar with, that you're familiar with, that are in the areas we're studying, but that we haven't, but we haven't recommended any improvements in those locations, let me know. This would be a great time for us to incorporate those. We can run a suite of alternatives that does not require any Forest Preserve District coordination. There may be, if it's of interest to the city, we can look at, you know, all these improvements are bringing the storm sewer capacity up to the 10-year event. If there's an interest in the city finding out what would be the incremental cost in providing 100-year protection, we can run those alternatives too. As an alternative, if you'd rather see what would be the cost of providing five-year storm sewer protection, the cost would go down. But if it's a value to the city to see those incremental costs, we can run those alternatives too. We could run alternatives forever and never be done. So, I'd like some direction, you know, what do you think would be valuable to you to help you determine which are worthwhile, cost-effective improvements? If you've got specific feedback for me, I'd love to hear it. If it's easier to get ahold of me or get ahold of Jeff, I'll get the recommendations from him. But over the next few weeks, we'll be finalizing our alternatives. And then we'll be putting our recommendations together in a written report, which will be submitted for your review by January 18th so that we can make a final presentation to this committee on January 24th and then a presentation to City Council in February.
Okay. I just have one question then, then I'll... Last night on the slide that I was here, you had a slide in there, what was the total price for all these projects? And I don't see that. What was the total price of all the projects if this council decided to go for a whole ball? What was the price? Where's that slide?
Six point six million dollars?
Six point six million dollars. Just so you know that these projects are not funded at this time. And my other question is, my other question is, prepare the paperwork on January 18th. My question is, we have a new Public Works Director starting January 2nd. You really, really think that Public Works Director is going to be on the ball, ready to give us some recommendations in this project when I'm sure he has not even seen any of this? And we're moving this forward and I don't know, okay, go ahead.
He's read the report already.
Oh, he read the report already? But he has not drove through his town to look at these areas on...
No, but I mean, he's read the report, so...
So, is he coming back with a recommendation?
He's given me some ideas, yeah.
Homish Rourke. A number of years ago, streets were done by the aldermen and the ward pushing for their own streets. It wasn't always one that needed it the most that got fixed. It was done by who had the most influence. We finally, I think, solved that by having a study that told us which streets were damaged and how much and gave us a list of the streets that should be done and how quickly. I don't like the idea of getting a consultant to tell us, you can do these 17 different things and you can put a Ferris wheel in or some kind of, you know... I'm looking for, tell us what we actually need first. Number one, you should get this fixed and it's going to cost that much so we can figure it, if we can handle it in our budget. Number two, which is the area next that is the most damaging, that needs to be fixed? Not for you to come to us and ask which one we want done. Here's $6 million worth of stuff to do because we're not engineers. And I don't think it's right for me to have to fight for my ward, for Potter and George, when someplace else may be worse. So, I'm saying, give us which one starts? Which one is number one? Which one is number two? And you don't even have to give us the cost beyond that because we're not going to do it for how many years anyway? We're talking about 10 years, 15 years progression?
Yeah. And let me clarify, I agree. I didn't mean to make it sound like I wanted you to tell me what should be done, when. And I, by all means, I've got, we've got ideas. I'm looking for your feedback because in order for this to be a successful plan, I don't want to just, you know, Baxman Woodman working in our office with our own ideas and then we get to the point where we hand you a report that you haven't had any opportunity to provide any feedback on. I don't want to do that. So, I would welcome any feedback that you have. But when it comes down to it, we will make our recommendations as to which we believe are the highest priority projects and what order they should be completed in.
Well, then I think the first thing you want to do is perhaps approach the Forest Preserve and say, we're thinking about developing this or doing this. Would you let us? Or we're thinking about ComEd, about putting in a retention pond. What's our chances of this? Rather than coming to us and saying, well, we have this alternative, but we don't know if we can get it from ComEd. Or we have this alternative to push more water into the Forest Preserve and they're not going to let us. I mean, it's just, $143,000 for this you're charging us. I want $143,000 worth of knowledge back. $143,000 worth of knowledge back. Not, oh, here's $6 million bucks worth. You do what you want first. Doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't impress me when you do that.
And this is, this project is still a work in progress. We're not finished, but the final product will be what you're looking for.
You will have it listed? My name, Roy Wesley.
Have you worked, are you familiar with the projects going on at the Oak Meadows Golf Course?
Yes.
Have you had any discussion with them about possibly some of these projects helping, corresponding with that?
I haven't had any conversations with them. I was at the open house where they presented it. They presented their master plan for the Oak Meadows improvements. And through my work with the Stormwater Commission, we've invited them to come and make a presentation to the Stormwater Commission when they have their plans a little bit further along, probably mid-April. And they were open to that. So, I haven't talked to them about how their improvements might align with these potential improvements.
You might want to look at that now because there are, into engineering phase on that. They just approved that. So, I don't want to miss the boat on this if they could, if that helps or not. So, I would like you to look at that. And I go along with Homish Rourke here. I mean, your presentation is good and you got a price of $6.6 million, but I think that you need to sit down with our city manager and the Public Works Director and just, I commend you on your, put your priorities here. I commend you on your presentation. It's one of the better presentations I've seen from Baxman Woodman. They're very well-prepared, so I don't give too many compliments, so thank you for that.
Appreciate that. And that's a good suggestion. I'll touch base with Oak Meadows and see how those improvements may align themselves with some of what we're looking at here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coles?
Every ward here has a flooding issue. Every ward here has a flooding issue. Third ward had one, second ward, fourth ward, and also the first ward. So, I mean, wherever you decide to start, it doesn't make any difference to, to me, or, I don't know if it makes a difference to Eugene, or if it makes a difference to Sharkey, or if it makes a difference to Roy, because they're the four wards. So, you have to start someplace, so, I don't know where we're going to start. You made a good presentation, I've watched it twice now, I watched it last night, and it was just about the same, and as far as I'm concerned, wherever you decide to start, that's where you're starting, and then the next one will come next. But you've got to remember, every time you move that water in Wooddale, you usually move it to some other ward, and then you start complaining there, because that's the way it's been for years, and so, you have to be careful, and then you get people that, you flood downstream because you put too much in Salt Creek, that's why they have the two reservoirs over here, you've got to remember that, and so, you've got a lot of things to decide. You're the engineers, we just say yes and no up here, and so, we pick which ones we want, but you're going to be careful what you, when you go start moving water around, and this, this of reserving the water in pipes, you've got, I realize that you guys say, well, if we put a thirty-inch pipe in, that'll hold so much water. Well, I know places that put in seven-foot pipes in, and they still can't serve the water in Water One, and so, I mean, you guys got to be careful, and we know we all have, we all have flooding spots in every one of our, every one of our wards, and there is, we just sit there and do, my ward flooded for forty years, I've been there forty years, I've seen it flood for forty years, and I lived with it, so, and every year, they grow, they put a new house up here, and a new house up there, and they change things around, but where they had one house on the lot, they built two on the lot, because they made the lot small. So, I mean, this is, and of course, that means more area that can't be absorbed, absorb in the water, so, you've got, every time that happens, you've got more water standing than soaking into the ground. So, there are these things that you guys got to figure out, because you're the engineers, we're not.
And that's...
All I wanted to say.
That's absolutely an important point, that, I mean, there's drainage problem right now, there's drainage problems all over the place, and the problem is there's too much water, and it doesn't have any place to go. Well, to solve that problem, if the water doesn't just go away, it goes somewhere else, and that's not just in Wooddale, that's every other place where we do these kind of drainage studies, and so, part of our job absolutely is to find where's a spot where that water can go, where it's not going to create another problem. We cannot make recommendations that just kick the can further down the street and move a problem from one spot to another spot, so, absolutely, you're correct on that.
One more thing else. When you move the water down Salt Creek, it goes into Elmer's, and then Elmer screams that, they're flooding me from up north, and that's why they bought this quarry, it's supposed to take care of the water, but they don't want to open it up because it says it takes too much to pump it up. So, I mean, that's part of our problems still, so, this is, this is the things that we have to live with. When you can swim in a place, when you can swim in a spot that's flooded, I guess it's flooded, all right? Just seeing where you're...
You made reference to planning for the ten-year rain event, and I find it interesting, and an interesting decision that we have to make of, do we look at comparison, ten-year to a hundred-year, or the fifty-year, whatever the case may be? So, it would be tough looking back at something where we did the ten-year fix, but just a few more thousand dollars, we could have had the hundred-year fix. So, how do we handle that delicate balance?
Well, I think it makes, it may make sense in some cases to, for us to prepare the alternative for, okay, so, most cities shoot for having storm sewers that are sized for the ten-year storm event, that's pretty standard. In most cases, when you have storm sewers designed for the hundred-year event, it's only because there is not a suitable overland flow path, where you've got structures that are flooded. Those are the places where people put, in, where cities put, in isolated cases, for a small section of the city, they put in storm sewers designed for the hundred-year storm event. But, it may make sense that, you know, since there are some areas that we looked at here that, where there are sensitive structures, or what, structures that are at a low enough elevation, that it makes sense to, even if the city sees the cost and then can't justify the additional incremental cost, at least you know what that is. I would hate to finish the study and for you still to be wondering, what would it have cost to do a little bit more? So, for that reason, I think whether we do it in every study area, and for every, maybe we don't need to do the hundred-year event, analyze that alternative for every case, but there are certain cases where it absolutely makes sense to, and it sounds like that's of interest to you. I think that, to me, that makes sense, that would be part of your decision. In some cases, maybe that makes it easier to make the decision, okay, we can only do ten-year storm events, because now we know what the cost is for a hundred-year. So, that's something we can provide to you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any possibility of having any grant money to help us with any of this?
Grants are, FEMA provides grants, and it's primarily for buying structures out. I mean, you're probably well aware that the city of Wooddale submitted a grant application last year to buy out several structures, and we're still waiting on that. FEMA's priorities generally are to buy out structures, not to build more detention basins and larger sewers. There are certain cases, though, really, what drives their funding for grants is they want to reduce their flood damage payouts, and in most cases, they get the biggest bang for their buck by buying out properties. But, the closer you get to the city of Chicago, and the more valuable the land is, the more you can, the more expensive it is to buy out properties, and the more likely it is, the more feasible it is to start doing sewer improvements. So, you can get grants for those, but I think as long as there is money, as long as there are homes that are flooding in Wooddale that can be bought out, the opportunities to get grant money from FEMA for sewers and detention basins is probably not going to be available.
Mr. Woods?
I'm good.
You're good? Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, I guess after this presentation, if you guys have any questions or add-ons or something like that, contact our city manager, and let him forward that on to the engineer. I think that will be the best way to do it, all right? Any other items on it, or?
No, I was just going to say thank you for your feedback and your time tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Item number seven, report of recommendation, pay request for partial poldi construction corporation, street improvement project, not to exceed two hundred and fifty-four thousand sixty dollars and seventy-nine cents. Someone want to take me through this one?